Wait, 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 wait. What do you like about this girl? I mean, there's like a lot of things I'd probably start with.
Hey my beautiful people, I hope you're doing amazing cuz I'm doing super amazing literally. Welcome to another vlog, literally if you are a new subscriber, welcome to the family for free and don't forget to hit the subscribe button and don't forget to like this video. And if you are a returning subscriber, literally welcome back to the channel, welcome back to the family. Without any further ado guys, literally in this video, I'm literally will be taking you guys through my productive Staggy sessions. So which is something that I don't really show so much on my vlog, so I thought that this time since it's exam season and I know most of you guys are literally writing also cuz I'm literally also writing, I don't know. Maybe our dates might be different there and there but it's literally exam season for everyone, so. I just thought that, you know, let me just share what I will be on about, literally. Before I started my exam season, my exam week and also all that good stuff. So today, the plan is to go to the library, it's literally, um. It's literally two o'clock in the afternoon and I need to go to the library to plan my study schedule that I'll be using for the course of the examinations. So the plan is to work smart, not hard, so something that is going to be efficient and suitable for me. So, one thing I have literally mastered with this whole studying um thing is that you need to find a suitable study method that works for you, of which it took me so much time to realize that that was actually my study method that was suitable for me, which is, um, I'd literally just like study, like read through and understand, so I'm not a person who's very I'm, I know how to cram, but personally I prefer to study and understand the context of whatever I'm reading and also then apply it, like literally when I'm in the examination rather than just like memorizing, I don't find it useful honestly because I'd be certainly believe that this is my career that I'm working towards and if I'm going to cram stuff, it's not really gonna benefit me. Even if I'm gonna get away with it, but like literally you're not gonna get away with it somehow somehow. But if cramming works for you, you know, it's literally, okay, we're literally different people and we process information differently, so yeah. I will talk so much on that later on in the video on how the study method I use and how to apply it, maybe you can try it if you haven't found a suitable study method for you. So before, um, I literally go further into today's business, I wanted to show you guys what's inside my bag before like I literally head out to the library. Anyway, so literally, you know guys, if you're a loyal sub-study here, you know the bag I literally always have. This here literally is the girl she thinks she is, I really love this bag, it's super amazing, comfortable. You know, I literally carried almost like every day to campus. I love this bag so much guys, so yeah. First thing first, I have my laptop, literally. I really carry this, I make sure or I ensure that my laptop is always with me because I mostly use this for most of the heavy load and the heavy work and by the way, I usually type out my study materials, so it literally fits perfectly in my bag. Hence, I really do like this, it's very portable, I'm not a girly with, who likes heavy laptops and so on, like big laptops, so I'm such a portable things lover slash girly, yes. So this is the first thing in my bag, my iPad, literally I carry my iPad every single day because this is like my book or my notebook, note taking, everything, so it's also in a good size, very portable. I carry this every day, so this is what I'm also carrying today, this is very important honestly. And I'm sure on my other one of the videos, I did specify what I use this for. So, this is like a diary and it's written 2024, I'm not sure if you guys can literally see that it's 2024. Focus, okay, this is like my diary, so I really love this diary because I use it to keep track of dates, especially this is specifically for my academics, nothing external from academics that is in this diary, so. It has some nice colored aesthetic paper that I really like, you see the colors very nice and aesthetic. And this is how a typical month, monthly calendar looks like. So it has like one from the first to the 28th, so this is specifically for the month of July, so yeah. Did I say the 28th? Sorry, the 31st actually. So anyway, this is like how, um, the whole monthly calendar would look like, so what I'll usually do is like write my my examination, if I have an examination on the 10th, so literally I'd write Criminal Law on the 10th. So whenever I'm studying, I just grab this on a random day and see, okay, what I'm working on towards and I literally write it down. And it also has some, like, daily dates, like as to the ones you'd see in a normal diary, if you have a diary, you know what I mean, there's these daily, um, spaces for like your day to day. So on the first, if I have something to do on the first, I'll have the further details of the task at hand here. So, literally, so this is the diary, literally I carry, this is the third thing in my bag. Fourth, I have my notebook, it gives corporate, it gives, you know, law school, you know, all the good stuff, so I really like sticking to my career theme, in most cases honestly, not every single time, but in most cases, so I carry this just when I wanna drop something. Thirdly, why didn't I say thirdly when it's a fifth item, like, is it even fifth? Okay guys, let's stop counting because we're gonna lose it either. Literally, so I have my wallet, another thing that I put, that I carry, it's in my wallet, literally there's no way I go without carrying my wallet because it has my student card, also another thing in my bag is my wallet, not my wallet. My pencil case, right, so this is what I carry also, so it consists of some highlighters as well as some markers, pens etc, anything that you think that is linked to stationery is literally in this pencil case. And also, the most important thing, I mean, literally for my law students are the where are you going to study without your Bible? Where are you going to study without your Bible? I mean, okay. Where are you going without this? Yes, your constitution, your constitution is like a bible, you can't go to church without a bible. I don't know if for those who come at me and say this, um, that, but that's just how I feel, it's my opinion, we do have different opinions, I just feel like your constitution is something you should have as a law student, like literally every single day of your life. Every time you have to have your constitution with you, so I carry this everywhere I go because there's no way you're gonna have, like be studying something and there's no way there isn't any constitution um referenced and that you need to look unto, so. Literally, you need to have this, honestly guys, carry this every time, I literally carry this, so you also, if you're not doing that, like just find yourself a constitution book and carry it every time you thank me later. Hygiene is very essential guys, hygiene is very pivotal because why are you a girly who doesn't prioritize hygiene? So I'm one person who prioritizes their hygiene, so. Honestly, and also smelling good, I mean, who wouldn't want to smell good, I mean. You know, I, I really like smelling good, so I really carry these, this is like a hand lotion and this is like a sanitizer. Smelling good to keep my hands moisturized, not feeling ashy, you know, I don't wanna be an ashy girl, I just wanna make sure my hands are moisturized. Oh yeah, and also the san- the sanitizer. You came across a friend at the library, say hi, or even if you didn't come across anyone, you're holding the surfaces at the library, like imagine how many people sat at the desk and how many people have literally touched with germs and etc, like I don't wanna talk about that because you're gonna be like, ew, you know, so. Carry your sanitizer, so for me, um, a sanitizer is like a game changer for me, so I literally carry this, it's very important, so just to, you know, be clean and at the same time smelling good. Yes, so sanitizer and a moisturizer, the same. And guys, lastly, but not least, is my file, so I carry my file wherever I go, almost every single, every single day. Why am I lying? Why am I lying? Okay guys, I don't really carry this every day, I carry it some days because it's too much admin, it's a little bit heavy as you guys can see, so it has my scripts, it has my assignments, it has my exam pad, it has just, just something that you think you'd put in a file, literally this was in this file, so I really use it almost every single day. So yeah guys, this is what I carry, everything is inside, everything is not squeezed up or anything, hence I love this bag so much, so. Literally, literally, so yeah, I really love this bag so much, so yeah, everything is inside, so I wanna go make some coffee. Guys, because when I'm studying, I really prefer taking something, so let's go make coffee and. Okay guys, so I just finished making my iced coffee as usual, this is what I usually do on my kickstarting the day routine slash studying, vlogging, everything, I like my coffee. But most importantly, I have recently started incorporating Magic Mind, so this is the world's first boost shots that has ever been created for your mind, for your cognitive thinking. So for a content creator like me who's always vlogging and also trying to manage my studies at the same time and relying so much heavily on caffeine, this was the game changer honestly because inasmuch as caffeine can help you stay alert for a certain period of time, but it tends to have a certain point where it crushes on your body, so this is where Magic Mind literally came in and trust me, I haven't been having these crashes anymore, I'd literally concentrate over like eight hours or nine hours, so I usually take like one or two as a carry on. So, I'm in love with this, it also contains natural ingredients such as matcha, so matcha is really important also to incorporate it in your daily routine, hence it contains some lethanine which also boosts your energy levels. And those are most of the things that I really loved about this Magic Mind Boost Shot because it has natural ingredients, even, um, I think it is, I don't know how to pronounce those natural ingredients, but I think it's, um, ashagandha, so this is an ingredient that is also um included in this little boost shot that also helps you to reduce stress and I've been loving this guys. So I'll always just take one of these and I'm good to go, so get yourself a Magic Mind and I have also included a discount code on my description box, so you can purchase and you also get forty percent or twenty percent off, so get yourself some Magic Mind. Okay guys, so I'm literally just taking a short break right now and then I resume back, I'm gonna snack a little bit. And then I literally, cuz right now I'm just going through the slides and reading the content and then I'm gonna do questions to literally assess myself if I really understand. Good evening guys, literally I'm back home and I've literally just changed and also I've had like some noodles, I was so lazy to cook, honestly guys. This is just how I've been feeling for the past days, so yeah guys, so I only had like a pack of noodles and some yogurt, I ate that. So yeah guys, I literally did get a lot done today, I'm super proud that I really did do something. It wasn't a day wasted, but it was a day that was made. Yeah. Guys, we came. Actually, I'm proud because like I literally made something out of the day, actually, that's what I mean. So yeah guys, um, it's literally late right, it's literally this is the time guys, I don't know if you can see, but this is the time. Yes, how late it is, so I'm about to leave guys, so tomorrow I have a long day, I'm gonna wake up somewhere around fiveish, sixish, I'm not sure, it depends. Um, yeah, I haven't, like I need to like just journal quickly and, but I have, yeah. And plan my other external plans, as you guys saw when I was at the library, I did like draft my academic planner for tomorrow, so I'm going for the InterVarsity Mood, since I'm an executive, so we'll be there to represent our university, right, because they are moving, uh, against University of Vender, so yeah. So guys, I don't wanna keep on talking here because already it's late and I wanna get like enough hours of sleep. And also tomorrow around four thirty, I have debate, so I don't know how I'm gonna juggle things up, but I have InterVarsity from nine to two and then from four thirty, probably till six o'clock, I have debate practice and this is our last practice, so I need to be there, it's literally mandatory and also I need to prepare for exam, so this is like a typical week for me, like literally I'm always this busy guy, so. It's literally turning to be a norm for me, so I don't even usually complain, honestly, like even if I have to complain or I do complain, it doesn't really change a single thing. I just need to plan better, of which is what I've done, so hopefully tomorrow I get a lot of things done. So guys, I'll see you, um, tomorrow morning and yeah, good night. Stay blessed, don't forget to pray. Morning my beautiful people, I hope you're doing great cuz I'm doing amazing, so literally today I will be going for an InterVarsity Mood, so we are invited as an executive committee to be there to reuse our great existence, so I'm super excited to go to the event cuz I can't really wait to cheer up my university seniors, cuz they'll be competing against the University of Vender in the competition, I'm super excited to see how it goes. I really like meeting guys and you do know that by right now, so yeah guys, so I just finished washing my face, I'm going to shower. And after I'm done showering, then I'm gonna just head out straight, it's like every morning I barely have time to do you know, talk to you guys, cuz I feel like I wake up the exact time or maybe not exact time. I just give myself like thirty minutes to prep or one hour, so. If I'm really running in between, literally it does chop the time, hence I tried to be as quick as I can just to show you around, so probably, I'll see you guys, so yeah. Okay guys, so I'm literally done showering and doing everything, I've looked for an outfit, so I just need to do my makeup and yeah, we're good to go, so I'm having some coffee, this right here, so it's gonna literally keep me up for a while, but as I said guys, every morning, Magic Mind is the way to go, literally. I'm just taking my, where is it, I'm focusing? So I'm literally taking my bottle of Magic Mind because we're trying to stay focused all day and have enough energy level so that I could be able to vlog. So also if you are a content creator and you find yourself feeling exhausted sometimes, you know, to manage content and all that, I really recommend, so yeah. I'm taking my Magic Mind short with my coffee again, so let me just have my boost shot first, then I have some coffee, then I'm gonna see you guys at the Mood Court, right? Thing I like about this Boost Shot Magic Mind, it will literally taste good, I mean, these taste super amazing, like this is good for the morning, honestly, to be honest, or even when you just wanna quench up, this is the, I feel like it's like a blended juice and tastes so organic, I mean, if you're not having Magic Mind, I don't know why you're having, because this exam season, I'm literally the girl that I think I am because of Magic Mind. So make sure you get some Magic Mind, I mean, it's either you experience it or you are told, so don't forget guys. Get yourself a bottle of Magic Mind and you come back and tell me, yeah. Morning guys, I hope you're doing good cuz I'm doing super amazing, so I'm literally ready today and I feel like I'm a bit prepared and not prepared at the same time. I always feel like I didn't study enough, even if I finished all chapters and everything. I still feel like there's an urge to literally go over, um, my work over and over again, so now I'm about to head straight to the library and catch up on a few cases. I'm about to just go study. The weather's a bit gloomy, um, I forgot to do an OTD outfit check, so I like wearing something very basic when I'm writing, so I'm wearing this top and a jacket as well as some comfortable black leggings. And I don't know if you guys will be able to see my shoes, I'm wearing these shoes, okay. So I'm wearing those shoes as well, and yeah, I just have my tote, it's very simple, basic. And my headphones because I like this anti-love vibe, just so that I could just enjoy studying, romanticize it, studying. Literally one more thing, um, I always forgot to fill up my bottle of water cuz I really like staying hydrated, hydration is very important guys, other than when you're writing examinations, even when you're writing, so. Yeah, so I'm just one person who like to just stay hydrated all the time and it's good for your mental, you know. Floor state, if I should say, so this better be the last time I'm coming here because there's no time. So my bottle is super okay, I'm like a king, so let's go guys. Okay guys, so um yeah, it's been a few minutes or even an hour that I've come from the examination and it's so cold. So I'm just wearing something cozy and I'm about to just get myself maybe watch a movie. Just to relax myself so I can feel so much better because it's been a hectic and exhausting week and all that. So yeah. Does that mean this is the end of the vlog? Yes, basically, this is the end of the vlog, guys. And if you've watched this vlog till this far, I really wanna give you so much appreciation. Literally, I really appreciate that you've watched this vlog till this far. And if you have enjoyed it, you can just simply show by liking this video, giving it a thumbs up. And also, don't forget to comment, guys. Literally. I met some savies or I always come across savies. And someone literally would be like, oh, Kim, I love you so much. I always like your content. I live for your content. For your vlogs and all that. Like, I mean, that's so sweet, guys, but just to show a support and all that. You can simply, even if you don't have something to say, you can just simply drop a heart to just show that you've watched the video till this far. I'd really appreciate that so much and just engage with my videos, guys. That is all for me. So yeah, I don't know. Do you have a summary of what happened throughout the vlog? Um yeah, so basically, I feel like I really enjoyed this vlog because I got so much done. I sticked to my strategic study plan. And I got to study almost everything. And they say you reap what you sow. So hopefully, I'm gonna reap what I sow and all the hard work and dedication I've been putting through. So don't you ever be lazy. Don't you ever be lazy. Just put in the work. Trust me, you're gonna be fine. And yeah, it always feels overwhelming when you're doing it, but when you look back, you're gonna feel so much delighted that, you know, I actually did that. So never stop, just keep on going, drink a lot of water, trust me, and take a lot of breaks between your study sessions. And you're gonna, you know, make it through. Honestly, it's just the short period of time that you just need to focus and give it your all. And then you're gonna have all the time in the world to literally do all the good stuff that you like doing. So yeah, guys, and also the mood card, right? That is such an amazing experience. Um I really loved that because I gained so much experience. I learned some stuff regarding muting from our seniors who are in fourth year and the other universities. It was a really great experience. I really loved that. So it was a belief. So basically, a belief what they do, they keep up the time. And also, we allocate venues when um the mooters are at the venue. We just handle things around, sort of like an organizer, right? So yeah, guys, this is what I did and I really enjoyed it. So that's literally a typical day in my life, literally summarized in a few days. And yeah, guys, I'm so happy to see you guys and I guess it's time to leave you. I'm gonna see you on my next vlog. And literally this week, it's my birthday, guys. So I don't know what I'm gonna do, but maybe if we're gonna have a vlog, we'll literally have a vlog. If not, I don't know. So guys, um thank you so much for watching this vlog. Don't forget to subscribe. Subscribe. Yeah, please subscribe, guys. And don't forget to share this video. And mostly, I'm gonna emphasize, comment, guys. I really enjoy reading your comments. And I love you so much. And yeah. I'll see you, guys. And don't forget, guys, to check my description box if you wanna purchase your Magic Mind. So I love you, guys, and I'm gonna leave you, guys. See you on my next vlog. Yeah.